Okay, so now we have 253 minutes.
All right, we're opening the public hearing for 253 Meadowbrook Road Amendment to RGFA Site Plan Approval. Is there anyone here to speak to this?
I have no idea.
An interested party.
Definitely not a boss.
It's an interested party, but...
This was continued from the last meeting and the board went out and looked at the site and this is a situation where there are substantial number of changes to the originally approved plan. And so I needed some guidance from the board on how to address the substantial number of changes. There was a memo that I prepared back in August for the September 3 meeting and there were roughly 26 specific changes they requested. And then there were a number of changes that were not, there were changes that they didn't really highlight on the plans. So in total, I think there were something like 45 or 50 changes.
And the ones that weren't highlighted, were they very minor?
Well, they were supposed to come back based on the discussion. They were supposed to come back with revisions specifically to the stair tower. There were a number of changes that were supposed to be provided.
Yep, the last time the architect provided them.
Right, so I don't know if...
And they were notified that it was continued to this meeting presumably?
They were told at the hearing that it was continued to this time.
Yes.
And it's on the agenda. I did not give them a personal telephone call because they have responsible adults who tell them who are aware of it. So obviously, Mr. Smith, Mr. Stevens, I can put my head up.
They'll be hiding the weeds.
Can I please follow your concern that we... I'm Jim Garrity at 247 Meadowbrook Road.
He's the chairman.
And my now speaking is the chairman of the Western Road Trust. As I understand it, there have been changes made in the plans for the placement of the septic system and some other issues that may or may not, I really don't know, have some impact on ground water flow. But it does not scare me to death that if this gets done, it gets passed instantly, we all assume it must do with the water flow. It was never looked twice once they make these changes. We end up with a swimming pool at the base of 253 on the road, another problem.
One of the things I remembered from the last presentation, and I may be wrong about this, but I thought that they presented an actual water flow plan to our consultant.
They always do that, okay.
Yeah.
Our consultant has reviewed the drainage. He is not here tonight, he's reviewed the drainage.
A concerned answer.
He's okay with it. But Mr. Stevens and his team do not appear to be up there.
I'm sorry, but could you clarify, review the drainage based on the increase in the square footage and the redesign of the septic system?
Other changes, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm, of all the changes that were proposed. And a fair amount of them are supposedly cosmetic changes to the building. But they weren't increasing the RGFA. There were some changes to the infiltration system. There were some changes to where they overblasted, so...
Well, obviously, for some reason, they're not here.
Right.
And you guys are neighbors?
Yes.
You guys are here.
There's some Beckers on it.
Okay, so... If they're not following the site plan approval, is there any reason we should not ask for a cease and desist? Any additional activity until they come in at their own risk?
Well, this issue was brought up two months ago. He, Mr. Stevens, came in to see if I would make the change to the wall, to the foundation wall. And then as the board made a call, he came in for the wall change, but then several days before, he came into the staff of plans to show all of the proposed changes. So at that point, the board said, "We need to have a public hearing on all these changes." We advertised the public hearing. And so we had the public hearing about three weeks ago, a month ago. There was a sidewalk. It was continued to tonight. Now, we have Leah Butters here and the applicant is not here.
Well, what I want to know is what our options are.
So the options are, is just continuing it to the meeting on the 29th at 8:30?
Do we have...
I guess David's point is they're continuing doing the work.
Right, they're continuing with all these changes.
And they're not coming in for a public hearing.
Right.
Because they just assume they will be all approved automatically.
That's something.
I mean, that's...
After the fact.
They've been doing some interesting stuff.
Yeah.
So, okay, if we're going to continue the hearing without asking for a cease and desist order from the building inspector, then we should send them a formal letter that any work that's being done which is not previously approved on site plan approval is at their own risk and may have to be undone.
Okay.
And we're sorry they aren't here. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, it does.
That they're notifying them.
You prefer that as opposed to asking for a cease and desist?
I'm not sure we can get a cease and desist, I mean, I'm not sure.
I think the building inspector's approach is that he's pretty much on the rescue.
Yep.
Okay.
He's proceeding.
But there were a number of things like they ended up overblasting in the area near, between Meadowbrook Road and the foundation, the basement foundation. So originally, there were supposed to be window wells there and now there's...
Oh, that's right, now there's like a sub cellar there.
But there's no, they said they were going to put a wall in there, but there's no wall details. They haven't detailed out how they're going to fix that.
Well, they may just be disorganized or maybe overcomplicated. I'm not sure there's any difference.
Jim, that was one other concern. This is, this time, I am speaking to James Garrity at 247 Meadowbrook Road. It's entirely selfish. They transplanted a large tree, which is a vital feature to the screening between us and them. And they're going to say no, and they have guaranteed now what happened with the lawsuit to make them do it. They've guaranteed for replacing if it dies. It was planted in total opposition to our pre-experts advice, Harry Davis, who knows what he's doing. Not that that means anything other than my concern is that tree's dying. Like, the lower limbs are already there. I don't know if it's going to make it. Now, I don't know what I'd do to you guys, but I've got some leverage at this point when they're still waiting permission to finish building. And once they've built and given them a CO, once they have their CO, I'm a dead duck. I mean, I would have...
Wait a minute, but this tree was part of the site plan, right?
They've guaranteed to all the trees.
They have to, they have to. They have to.
If it dies, it has to be replaced and fine.
I'm out of place, I'm sure, but in the articles of approval, or the certificate of approval, I think it was written in one of the articles, forgive me, that the trees were supposed to be watered and taken care of.
They were.
Those trees have not been watered the entire summer. I live there, I walk there, I've noticed they certainly have the drip holes on them, the bad hoses have not returned on either trees, they're on the Garrities or the Beckers. This is the first rain they've had since...
Yeah, since July.
First of August or end of July.
Well, could you remind them of that in that letter as well?
Well, it's a true, but a weakness as good as a not. Dead tree equals replacement. Their problem, if they never return the...
Well, it is their problem.
It's their problem, but it's our problem. But right now, we have some leverage because they need to get approvals.
Right.
Once they've got those things, I don't mean to say I'm a dead duck, but I mean, I could say, okay, if the tree is dead, time to replace it.
Even if they have approvals, they have, the site plan approval states that they must maintain that.
I just want the reality of life is, once they've been in there for four months, once the tree is done, we'll get to that as soon as we can, like in 10 million years and so...
Well, actually, we do okay with enforcing things like that. Uh-huh, well, it's raining.
Are there any other comments? Does someone else want to add?
Do we have the audio thing?
Well, we are hoping there would be some recording of the acoustic measurement of their equipment, their equipment. I mean, we talked about it and I know there's something that you have required and I don't know when that will come forward.
For a generator or air conditioner?
Yeah, and they're conditioning.
Yeah, and hopefully, there's some sort of...
Our standard has been 40 decibels at the...
Oh, probably, correct. Which is for a generator, but I think you're extending it to all equipment.
I think we probably are.
I don't know.
Yeah, and the question is...
They were going to test it.
Yeah, the question, can't they figure that out ahead of time? Figure that they can do that, maybe figure that out before they install it.
And it can then be also attenuated by enclosures, insulated fences.
I have a better idea. You know that big window well that they overblasted? Sink the generator there?
They are.
Well, no, the generator...
No, because that's the very best sound attenuation is when it's buried down deep and they put a cover on it. That's really amazing, so, hey, there's a spot for it.
The generator is next to their, their large garage, separate garage, and it's on the outside. And it faces our house, so it's not near their house, it's next to...
Yes, it's near the garage.
So that's, just wanted to make sure that happens before it all.
I think it's in a well too, though, isn't it?
No.
That's the air conditioning.
So the air conditioning's in what way?
Oh, here's Mr. Stevens.
They overblasted, right?
Yeah, is it in there? Is the AC in that?
I think I have his proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that's cool.
Mr. Stevens?
Hey, how you doing?
Hi.
I thought you were gone.
Thought I was.
I didn't know we were on the agenda.
Pardon?
I didn't know we were on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
I texted his agent.
Thank you.
Okay, so... You got some information for us?
I don't know what we're talking about, I'm sorry. I thought this was a, I didn't know we were on the agenda, but what's the question?
Changes from the RGFA, excuse me, changes from the site plan approval?
Are these changes since the time they came in in September? What was the date you came in? When the whole team presented? Yeah, three weeks ago and it was recommended approval from the board?
No. I was waiting for guidance from the board to draft a decision and I don't, there was no recommendation at that meeting.
We're supposed to have architectural drawings, redrawings from, you know, the big staircase?
There were some additional changes that were going to be made.
As well as other things, yeah, and we were just waiting to see those. Waiting, that was part of it, and that's the one that stands out in my head.
That's right. And do we have any meeting minutes or gaps of that particular meeting that we could look at?
Which meetings?
Yeah, I apologize, I...
Well, maybe there's been a miscommunication we better get straight because we were about to send you a...
So here are the dates that I have. There was a meeting on July 16.
That was the site, the septic?
No, at that meeting, we talked about the sidewalk and we scheduled the sidewalk for September 2nd. And we scheduled the hearing, the next hearing for September 3rd.
Did that happen?
Which we had.
Which that, exactly.
I'm sorry, I walked away thinking we were all set, writing it up.
I'm sure Betsy, you have your meeting, I'm sure that meeting on September 3rd.
I thought all the issues were addressed.
But you would have to... What I want to know is, has your architect made the change that he agreed to make?
That you wanted the windows more?
Yeah, and we haven't heard a word.
Oh, we agreed, we had agreed at the time. Marcus stood up and said, yes, he would make the change.
You would have to submit those plans, the revised...
Then I'll get Marcus to submit the plans that were agreed upon at the last meeting according to Mr. Becker's request.
What else, what else is there? There was the sidewalk on Meadowbrook for September 2nd.
It's already done.
Right.
We're going over the timeline.
Are you looking for your September 3 meeting minutes?
Yeah. Okay, there were comments made about, there were changes being made, not just to the crowded areas on the plans, but throughout the project and this needed to be repaired. I wanted to see an attic plan. There was a large window in the basement on Meadowbrook with a large retaining wall, but there's no details of the retaining wall. The west elevation facing into the lot, the stair tower, there was a change in height to, in windows and there was a discussion about changing the sill height of the windows on that tower. They wanted to see cross gable dormers. Al Adalot pointed out that the roof plan showed a 45 when they were actually curved stair tower roofs, so they, he wanted to see detail on that. Increase, increasing the basement space due to the septic system design. There was more detail requested on that. Retaining wall behind the garage. Electric service had to be finalized through the transformers. There's some change requested there.
And then there was a condition about prior to the issuance of the building permit for the installation of the generators and the AC and condensers, compressors, that the details for the proposed unit, the proposed HVAC plant would be reviewed by the planning board. So I don't think we've seen any of that either. Yes, correct? We haven't.
Well, since we brought to our attention that the tree, the major tree that was transplanted and other plantings haven't been watered enough or something, they seem to be dying.
David, we're going backwards.
If they die, then they need to be replaced.
We're going to replace, that's been gone over umpteen times. This is so regressive. I mean, this is like we missed a meeting. We had the whole team here a month ago, team, and I don't know, I'm in time warp here. All of these questions were addressed by my consultants and agreed upon any contentious...
That's good. What we haven't gotten to is the documentation of those agreed upon changes.
The only, the only documentation that you would have requested would have been a change in the window height on the rear stairway, which administratively, I'll get to tomorrow if that's what we require here. But when we left, the comment was made that, boy, we haven't seen so many changes in, you know, because Betsy, who is new here, requested, not just administrative, in fact, Marcus Gleistin stood up and said, "In previous planning board meetings, this would be administrative only." But because she's new, she requested a full planning board meeting, which we adhere to.
No, absolutely not.
Excuse me, let me finish, please.
Just a second.
No, really, this is just pathetic.
No, it's not pathetic and, you know, it's not regressive. It seems there've been some miscommunication, okay? And, you know, maybe you should address me instead of that's, if that's your issue, okay?
Let's move on, okay? What do you need?
The documentation that we need.
So what, she doesn't know what we need. What do you need? And I'll get it maybe.
She just specified exactly what we need.
No, no, excuse me, she hasn't specified. She's rambling on about notes that are incoherent and I don't understand what you need. What more does this board need for this project? We've been through eight planning board meetings.
If you're going to, if you're going to behave out of control like that, or maybe you're in control.
Out of control, David.
A little bit. Don't need to raise your voice, you don't need to, you know, make it a bigger issue. The issues maybe are small, but let's deal with them and let's not make them bigger than they are.
I'll tell you what I'd like there. Give me a list of what you need and I'll address it. Because right now, I don't know what you need.
We'll clarify.
Thank you. That's all I need.
It'd be helpful.
Because it's just going back to...
Let's take a look at Betsy's notes. I did not take notes of those because it looked like at that last hearing, because those are the subjects that were addressed. I thought they were all addressed to the board's satisfaction, but I knew they need to get changed with the windows. The subjects she raised or the items that his team addressed at that meeting, he brought in the whole team to do it. That's why you're hearing that, but if we get a list that shows what hasn't been addressed yet, we can address it.
We'll do that.
There's always documentation required, even when we have to revise the certificate act, which we do. And in order to produce this revised COA, we need some documentation that goes along with it. They did bring documentation in, I assume.
No, but revised, yeah. Additional revisions were requested, clarification.
I assume they submitted, but maybe they didn't.
No, they didn't.
Presentation documents, because I know they spend a lot of time on retaining walls, but if we get the list, we'll find out what you need.
And I apologize.
Just a second.
I apologize, folks, but I'm working with a fairly competent team who has been before the board multiple times. I think they understand what we need or what you need, but please, just guide us.
I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that there's been a miscommunication and all parties have a role in any miscommunication. Enough said on that. What you need, as you say, and what you just asked for, is a list of what they need documentation of. All the, you know, what they need to show in their plans and the documentation of the changes so that those are part of the record, right? They have to be part of the record under site plan review. Am I correct, sir? Okay, so...
And we probably need to know which ones need to be recorded or which ones are just working documents that you need on the record. I assume none of these are probably things that have to be recorded at the registry.
I wouldn't make, I wouldn't make a presumption on that.
The last changes, I believe, they...
Without seeing them, I mean, I would assume that there are some, if not all.
You'll let us know.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens came in probably within the first month that I started working here. He indicated to me that there was a change in the foundation area because he was able to change his septic system. So I scheduled it for an informal discussion with the planning board because the decision states very clearly that I have certain limited requirements for review and that was not within my purview. So I scheduled it for an informal meeting. Less than a week before that informal meeting was scheduled, I got a series of plans that indicated probably 35 to 40 changes. The planning board, I continued to keep it on the hearing or on the schedule and Al Adalot specified at the hearing, specifically since there was a list of a substantial number of changes, I was reprimanded for putting it on the agenda because of the length of changes that were required. So I was not the person who specified the agenda. So I resent your comments and they're totally inappropriate. And so we had the public hearing and the public hearing, there were a number of changes that they were supposed to be making to the plans. I am not a babysitter, I am not going to be dealing with these people on a regular basis who cannot understand when their public hearings continue to.
Well, I ask for your continued patience in all counts. And I know that I'm usually doing the right thing when everyone hates me, so if you're feeling squeezed from both sides, you're probably doing the right thing, okay? And it's good to hear your timeline on all of that. We remain in this same place where we are now. Where Betsy, if you would be willing to put together that list of what we require on the plans to demonstrate the changes, give them to Jonathan, I presume? Is that...
That's fine.
Fine, give them to Jonathan and we need to continue this hearing to a date certain. Are we correct here?
Yeah.
Everybody's on board? Would you be able to give us an idea about that?
October 29th at 8:30.
Is there anything else we need to address?
The only, the only reason we're here is because we were told at the end of the last meeting to be here on this day and at the time they signed.
That's funny, we didn't, you know, I've got a team of 18 people.
I know, but they hear all...
No, no one got to it.
Unless it's their first rodeo, I don't understand how they...
Experience people.
I don't understand how they missed it.
My mistake, so I said, I saw it was the usual, we'll have a written decision and vote on it, so I didn't think we had to vote.
No, because we continue to a date certain.
Yeah, well, that's what you do unwritten when you're going to vote on a...
As well.
Yeah, so wrong assumption on my part.
Okay, we will get past all this. But there was the business about checking on your plantings because you don't want to like spend twice on them, right?
Absolutely, I understand that, David. My client has full responsibility for replating a 32-foot tree that was planted once if it dies. We understand that. We've added more trees at the behest of the Beckers. We've added actually two more trees not requested by the Garrities because we thought it would be better for both of us, so we're trying to do the right thing.
Well, it's good to try and it's good to succeed.
We're trying.
Quote me on that.
We're obviously very trying.
All right.
But Betsy, I apologize.
All right, October 29th, 8:30. I'll forward the list. So... I sense a lot of this is documentation, but some of it, you know, maybe I'll get a sense from you, Betsy, aside from, when I see the list, I'll get a sense for whether some of this needs further discussion with the board or if it's just documenting what is discussed before.
I would, when you think about that, I would communicate with Betsy throughout that.
Was that my misunderstanding? That we wanted to see the renderings, the architectural renderings? I wanted to see.
The revised plans.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
So there are revised plans.
Well, they brought in the revised plan.
No, then they would revise again.
Revisions were made and clarifications requested at the meeting, yeah.
Because there were changes that we talked about after meeting. Because there were changes that we talked about after meeting, if I remember correctly.
Can we get minutes of the last meeting, David? I mean, that's, I think, what's misleading here is, my team thought that they were done. Plain and simple, seriously. If we've fallen down on the job, then I'm gonna hold them responsible.
Really? I don't know that we have them printed yet.
It's on tape.
There are on tape.
They're on, right.
Okay.
Diana has them too. She can tell you exactly which ones.
Okay, so this is continuing to October twenty-ninth at eight thirty.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
No, no.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just, just a question, if I may.
Sure.
Acting chairman, what happens in the meantime? Can I keep building?
At your risk.
At my risk.
Your risk.
Okay.
It's been one of those nights. I knew I shouldn't have gotten out of bed this morning.
We're on tape. Betsy, we have a percent support you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did we have some talk?
I have no idea.
I'd actually suggest you start issuing the-
He's telling us that he has experience too, really, and that he's gonna show up.
I think it's a slight change based on the discussion earlier today. Most of them are not so-
This will only take six minutes for the review approval.
Minutes, don't it? I don't think you're gonna be, you got minutes.
No budget.
No budget. I don't like it.
So, we, we have to wait until actually ten fifteen.
It's fine. It's time to read the, the, if we have it. Is that a body?
Do we need to call the police?
Best defense is anonymous.
Don't you come on the two fifty-three Meadow Brook Road. Please, Jim, I'm giving you a very warm, tender piece of wood.
Pollen, par. I don't know. Yeah, yeah. Y'all are welcome to come on Jordan Road. We're coming swimming or something.
A little, a little shelter, a little.
I'm gonna be taking it all out. A lot of gas line work right now. It's kinda fun.
Yeah, I've seen the pipes.
It's crazy. But there's good workers out. It's a nice crew. They're really good. They clean up nicely every day, catch up.
I actually drive down there sometimes in the morning on my way to work, and there was a big flatbed on Lexington Street, so it slowed a lot of people down. It's like-
My, my, two bus drivers every morning with my kids on several buses, and it's pretty amazing how much traffic passes on that street, right? And it's crazy. It's, it's-
Um, yeah, sometimes with the bus, we've had the same bus driver for six years, the gas pedal, bus driver. But you can see the line of cars behind him, and he has to go down and turn around at the region because they're telling the light, and when he turns to come back, nobody will let him out.
Oh, yeah, no.
And it's, it's-
It's definitely cut through to the office park.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. No, they're tough to run.
We call all of these.
Although I have to say, over the years, we've been coming off church, you know, but people actually-
Yeah, people are good. I think people are good from, it depends. I think the, the shop partners and they're all good.
Oh, no. Okay, wait, wait, wait. So, this is, this is the more recent one. And, um-
I wrote the one that you all are gonna work on today a little bit.
Okay, well, um, this is the word five.
And, are we looking at the same thing right now?
Yeah, okay.
We can share one.
That's okay.
Okay. So, it sounds like the blasting was a question. So, is it just law that we have to, um, like, so once, for example, once we know we're ready to blast, we have to then really have almost a month's notice because we have to get on your agenda. How does that work?
Let's wait till it's done.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'll run us a little. We're not on TV tonight?
We are on TV.
Oh, good. Okay, good either. I feel bad. We're working.
Two TVs.
Good.
I, I, I'm just interneting.
I like to watch it later. See how we do.
We still have four minutes.
Four minutes or?
That clock is, uh, four minutes past.
Oh.